This is our fifth episode and we are in the Taurico Ward. I hope I got that correct. I had a little bit of coaching at the beginning. We are here to provide voters with a better quality way to know their candidates as real people. Now, I would like our candidates to introduce themselves. Oh, I'm sorry. This is my second time doing this and my heart is still on my chest, but I'm still learning. Opening credits. I have randomly, oh, to introduce themselves first. How about that? Posters up. Posters up. All right. Starting from closest to me. Poster down.
My name's Murray Guy. Any more revealing?
Not tonight, but thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephen Wheeler.
Good afternoon, Tarouka. My name is Martin Rosebean.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is a very recent photo of myself. Nice to be with you.
Thank you very much. All right, we are going to start off with opening statements. I have randomly chosen a list here. So up first, you have one minute. Larry.
Hi, everyone. Why I'm standing again for the Taurico seats after having been on council off and on for quite a few years is because I really want to see our city keep moving forward. You'll see my sign at the back and this is a flyer that I'll be sending out to you. It was the sign I used in 2019, "Moving Forward." And then, of course, we had the debacle and the commissioners appointed. I want to say we need to keep moving forwards. It's the most important thing. We cannot go backwards. We can't go back and try and overturn everything that's happened. Our city needs good people that will keep things moving forward. On the back of my flyer, you'll see all the things that I have been contributing to over the time I've been on council to get the facilities, the roads, everything, the housing that we need for our city. So please, consider giving me your vote again. I can provide experience to a new council to keep us all working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. All right, next up, Murray.
Because you're going to stand, but look, thanks very much. I'm Murray Guy. I was born and raised in Tauranga. My background is in the coach industry and the house and land development industry. So my psyche is about taking care of people. It's about asking you what you want to do, where you want to go, and my job is to provide you with the information, the background, and the options to bring about your goals. As far as the city goes in the past, my focus, I guess, is more about today. And it's about taking care of business for today. I have my grandchildren living with me, but my real focus is ensuring that whatever issues you have in Taurico, or for that matter, the balance of Tauranga City, that's going to be my focus. I'm not about putting in infrastructure specifically for the benefit of those that are to come. I guess mainly because I believe they should be paying for it, and that probably should be their decision. So I'm about representing you, the resident, the rate payer, predominantly for today. Common sense. Vote Murray Guy, Taurico.
Thank you, Murray. Next up, Stephen.
Hi, I'm Stephen Wheeler. I'm standing for council. I've lived in Tauranga for 30 years and Taurico for the last five. I believe that council needs, I'm a self-employed accountant. I believe that the complex nature of council requires someone with more technical abilities than in the past because understanding how the rates work and how council operates is one of the essential keys for understanding what you need. The city does need to go forward, but it doesn't need the growth at such a rate that it's so unaffordable to everybody. The vision, we have a clear vision now from commissioners, but it's actually quite unaffordable. So therefore, we need to be careful what we do, work out what of the 900 million projects sitting there need to go forward and what needs to be held in advance. While I am available, I will listen to you and I will talk to you. And I will do what you ask me to do and I will represent you wisely. So vote for me because I think it's time for change on the council.
Thank you, Stephen. Lucky last. Murray.
That's Martin.
Sorry, Martin.
Good afternoon, Tarouka. My name is Martin Rosebean and I'm standing in the Taurico Ward at this current election. I was asked to stand, I was approached to stand, and I've accepted the challenge of running to serve you in the upcoming council election. This next election is very important. It's longer than the usual term, four years and three months. We have, the incoming council has a lot to do to grow this city. I think the current focus is more focused around centre of town as opposed to the growth of the city and solving our housing and infrastructure issues. I have a background in engineering as a farmer. And if successful in this election, I will tirelessly serve both the Taurico Ward and the Tauranga greater area of Tauranga. And I look forward to the opportunity of representing you on the council. So Tauranga and the Taurico Ward, vote one for Martin Rosebean. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have our question, box questions. Again, I have randomly made a list of names, and this time it is Murray. If you'd like to choose a box.
Number one, Martin.
Number one, wonderful. Question J, Juliette. Do you, Martin, support the proposed CBD stadium?
I totally reject the proposal for a new stadium on the domain. It's actually my vision, hopefully one day, when it might come to pass, that we actually develop the domain more as a green space. I know when my wife and I travel, one of the things we make a little beeline for is, for example, the Christchurch Gardens or the Hamilton Gardens, or be they further afield. So the benefit I see with gardens is that they certainly have a significant environmental benefit, don't they? But they also provide a service to the community 365 days a year. So we don't have suddenly 20,000 vehicles trying to find a park, but we do have every day, it might be 5,000 or 1,000. So no, I don't. I don't see it also as being particularly logical. Our city is growing to the east and to the west. I think we have got opportunities to put a new stadium. So I'm not saying we shouldn't have one, but we're logistically, they are better placed.
Thank you very much. All right, Martin.
Very good, sir. Yeah, while I appreciate the attention, for those at home, main camera one, obviously address the room. No worries. G, G for Gordon. Yeah, I'm supposed to know this one. Given the well-established evidence globally and within New Zealand that congestion is increased when more and bigger roads are built and also that congestion is bad for the economy, including wages, what policies would you support to improve the mobility of residents around Tauranga City?
Well, the first part, I've got my doubts. I'm not entirely convinced that the established evidence suggests that congestion does. The biggest issue Tauranga has is a lot of its infrastructure is behind the eight ball. We are too slow in developing for the growth the city needs. We should have been building some of these roads 10 and 15 years ago. And while I agree that a lot of the current infrastructure spending has actually shifted the car park further down the road, we need to move faster to get this congestion problem solved. So the current infrastructure, like the Northern Link, I agree that Woodsport, that's about 10 years too late. It will help move traffic faster towards Tapuna and Makara. The upcoming expansion at the Taurico will help move traffic quicker in and out of proposed residential developments. So I'm not entirely in favour of agreeing with that statement. It's just that we're doing everything too late. We're playing catch-up, really.
Good answer, good answer. All right, Larry, you're up.
15, thank you. Question X, X-ray. How do you plan to
We're back. It's in the ballot. Sorry about that. We had some technical difficulties. Yes, that spiraled out of control. So anyway, let's not waste any more time. We are back with the question.
Larry, your question was, how do you plan to address climate change and environmental issues at the local level?
Well, the first level is our homes, ourselves, and how we behave. And five, six years ago, I bought a plug-in hybrid. A lot of people thought I was a taxi driver then, but I got a lot of friends on the side of the road. We now have a fully electric car. I put solar panels on the roof. I believe the government should be helping more people to do that because that is one thing we can do locally. We need to do better with our public transport. I think the new trial for the on-demand buses is an excellent initiative because the big buses running around are just using up too much and spewing out too much. Not just carbon, but pollution out of the back. We've got to fix our roads so we don't have the congestion, which is leading to the poor air quality we have in the city. We have all of the trucks going to our port, spewing out diesel pollution. Those are things that I think are very important for us to address in our city.
Thank you very much. Stephen.
Roger, box 15. Oh, that was box 15, so 20. Question Echo. International studies have shown that an active appreciation of a society's diversity boosts both positive wellbeing and economic growth. Some might argue Tauranga City has in the past overly represented a specific demographic. How would you ensure Tauranga City Council actively reflects our whole society?
Right, Tauranga City does, I believe, actively reflect our society. It encourages both ethnic groups and non-ethnic groups to have their own festivities. It goes out of its way to actually encourage them and just to make facilities available. The use of events where people participate and where we have, what I believe is the events every Sunday night at the different parks around Tauranga where the different ethnic groups come and provide all the different food so people can try something new. I believe we are actually quite advanced in this area. We don't actually pick on We don't actually pick on any one group. I believe we're actually very fair across the whole of the city.
Thank you very much. All right, Larry, your choice.
Number three, have we heard that one?
Go to Larry, three is available. Question Alpha Bravo. How will you make sure that the needs and concerns of young people are a priority in your policymaking?
It's a very challenging one, that, because over the years that I've been on council, we've tried to have youth councils, find out ways to connect with young people and hear from them. And I think all those things are things we need to work on. But you have to have young people that are prepared to step up and get involved as well. And in this city, many young people go through high school and go off to university. Fortunately, we have a university here now, so some of them are staying. But really, it's up to young people to get involved in voting, too. In this election, if they want to be recognised and heard, there are some very good young candidates that are standing. And I think if they don't vote, they won't have people there that live in their world and can represent them. That is the most important thing about who's sitting around the table that has connections to youth that can represent their viewpoint, as it is to many other sectors of society. So my encouragement is, young people, get out and vote this time.
Couldn't agree with you more there. Stephen.
Number two.
Box number two, which I already opened accidentally. Question U for uniform. Do you support funding the civic centre? Do you support funding the civic centre by the way of ratepayer levies and the sale of assets?
The civic centre is going to be a very expensive item and the current ratepayers cannot pay for it straight away. It will have to be charged over, I agree, a uniform charge over the city over a number of years. Otherwise, the new people arriving will get the benefit of something that's paid for by the old. I do believe that the civic centre is, the costings are a wee bit short. Our history in Tauranga City is not good at doing costings. And we find that normally we'll be over budget in every building, every major item we do. We've estimated incorrectly. So yes, we do need to future-proof it and make sure it goes out further.
All right, we have a button, Larry.
Thank you. Yes, that project is underway. The contracts have been signed, the work is going. So it's not something any new council should come in and try and delay or defer. Funding it has been worked out pretty well. There will be additional things and there may be some things that could be sold or that can help support that. But that CBD centre is vital to the prosperity of this whole city. And I'm really stoked to see the life coming back there, as we've seen the farmers open, we're seeing number two, Debenhams Road, and so on. People would not be investing in there if they weren't seeing the council invest also in that Tumana Wataki Otepa Civic Centre, which is going to be incredible for us as a city.
Thank you, Larry. All right. Next is Martin.
Wait for the young man to get back.
Yeah.
I'll have box 24, thank you.
Box 20. All right.
24. Hugh, Quebec. Queenstown. With a CBD that needs revitalising and a housing crisis, supply and affordability-wise, how are cost savings and rate changes going to contribute to this?
Well, first of all, I'm not entirely convinced that our entire city centre needed to be revitalised all in one hit. One project at a time over an affordable timeframe. We are a city that is desperately short of housing. Last estimate I read was 5,000 houses currently short. With the anticipated population growth, we're going to be short another 5,000 homes by 2030. And if we don't start remedying this, we're going to have a serious issue around affordability of housing in Tauroanga. The only way to have a cheaper house is to have more of them. We live in a beautiful city and people want to come here. We can't stop people from wanting to live here, so we have to provide them the opportunity to live and grow and develop in our beautiful city.
Thank you very much. Murray, your choice.
Number four.
Four.
Hi, Indigo. India. Everyone said, um.
The goat's work.
U for unicorn, right? Your question reads, are you prepared to support unpopular but necessary levels of rates increase in order to ensure the financial viability of the council instead of voting for lower rates increases and the interest of your own reelection prospects at the expense of future councils being able to fund infrastructure maintenance and upgrades? Can reread that if you need.
I don't have a problem with being unpopular because that's pretty much a permanent state for me, I guess, in some quarters. But no, look, I'm at the stage of life where we're giving back. And let's be honest, I'm not going to be contributing through the elected member process for too many more years. Hopefully, just another four. Insofar as the financial viability and rate rises, personally, I believe there are significant savings to be had within the organisation. So before I was prepared to comment on whether or not I accepted, you know, proposed rate increases, I would need to be assured that what we are spending today, we are getting good value for. Who sends their grandchildren or their wives? No, just stick with the grandchildren. Who sends their grandchildren to the shops with a blank cheque? Buy what you like, spend what you like. Who doesn't query their children on their return, what did you buy? Buy cigarettes, no more money.
Thank you very much. So that's what it sounds like.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right. Martin, you're up.
21.
21 for Martin. Whiskey. How do you plan to address the issue of affordable housing for young people and young families?
Well, as for those of you who've been following the city council website, this is one area where the council with us, the current commissioners, have pushed very hard on. Plan changes to allow medium-density housing around Tauroanga, roading infrastructure to push Tauroanga into new potential subdivision areas. Pathmoa East has its problems at the moment. There's not enough funding for the roading infrastructure, but the suburb potential is there. The highway north is opening up opportunities in Tapuna and carrying on extension in Imoko Rua. And of course, the recent developments at Keenan Road give opportunity for future development. But as I've already stated, all these things are too late, they should have been done 10, 10-odd years ago. But they are there, the houses are coming.
All right, we have a button.
Just further to that, one of my frustrations with Tauranga City as a council has been we have in our city what's called, well, it used to be called a building impact fee. One of the very few councils in New Zealand that imposes a fee on the young person or the older person that is building a new home. Now, I just saw, I think just recently, $40,000 to $50,000 is the proposed approximate amount for the individual building a new home. So before you even pour the foundations and buy the land, when you apply, you know, apply to build your new home, you struck the building fees. It might be seven grand, it might be 10, but on top of that, 40 or 50. So it does intrigue me why we continue to, in my opinion, subsidise the developers because that's what we're doing. This fee of $40,000 or $50,000 is about meeting the cost of growth. You know, those new amenities that we're going to need for the new people. So personally, I would prefer it was included in the development impact fee because as a previous developer buying greenfields, I would deduct the cost of that fee from the greenfield seller.
Oh, and another button, Larry.
Yeah, I think it's important to point out that in 2020, they introduced new infrastructure funding and financing models, which Tauranga City Council has been the first to use so that we can shift that burden of costs from those building impact fees and the developer contribution levies and spread it more over the generation of the people who'll come in, providing all of that extra infrastructure to open up housing, which is super expensive. Can't all be laid on the cost of the section or the cost of the houses, as has been pointed out. It's got to be spread further, 30, 50 years into the future so that places like the Tauriko West development with 4,000 houses can come onto the market at a reasonably affordable rate. Also, the intensification down at the city centre has to happen. There's supposed to be 4,000 people living there if you compare with Auckland's inner city. And if we don't invest in that city centre to encourage people to live there in apartments, we won't see that suburb grow either.
Thank you very much. Okay, Murray, you're up again.
Five.
Five is gone, next is six. Negative on five. Sweetest. Question S, Sierra. Do you support the debt increase of around $1 billion today to $3 billion in the next 10 years?
Look, I haven't got enough information and quite frankly, I haven't got enough expertise as an outsider to really understand what is making up that full quantum. What I do know, and I serious, well, I rephrase that. What I genuinely believe is that more than likely, there are items and procurement costs associated with that 10-year plan, which, you know, could be reduced quite significantly. So my answer would be no, I don't agree with it. But that's on the basis of not having full and complete information. I look forward to being a city councillor, seriously, because I hope the very first role of the elected members will be to sit down, take a deep breath, and clearly understand where are we heading as a community? Where actually will our debt levels be? Because we don't want to be like the coalition government and just find out when the books are opened that they were just a little bit misled perhaps.
All right. Next is Stephen.
Seven for Stephen. Question K is Kilo. Do you support a museum for Tauroanga City?
That's a good question. Do we need a museum for Tauranga City? A lot of people say yes, but once again, it's the cost and where do you place a museum? We're talking about revitalising the city, but you've got to have a place to put it where people can get to it. And when you look at people going to museums, how are they young or they old? Majority of Tauranga people do not go to museums. And I wonder if this is more a long-term plan rather than a short term.
Thank you very much. Larry.
Number 21.
21 is gone.
Oh, gone, sorry. 25?
25.
Oh, learn something every day.
Sounds very arbitrary. A for arbitrary. What political party are you linked to, Larry?
I am affiliated to no political party. I stood last year in the parliament elections as an independent because I wanted to try and push the government, be it National Labor, and it turned out to be National, to do more about our roading here. We've been waiting so long for State Highway 29, 29A to be addressed. When I was in parliament with United Future, if I was ever affiliated to a party, but it no longer exists, I worked very hard for the city to get our roading on the map. And in 2005, it was all funded and going to go ahead until Winston took the toll off the New Harbour Crossing and the funding for TL, TNL, Ring Road round the city fell apart. But that's why I stood last time and I will stay as an independent because in council, I believe, the benefit we have here is that councillors are independently aligned. We can think for ourselves, we can make decisions not along party lines and do what's best for the city in every decision.
Thank you very much. Now, I'd just quickly like to introduce my question host, Ray.
Hello and welcome.
I forgot to do it.
I run trains, not bosses.
Wow.
Rail replacement is, can be a nightmare.
So anyway, thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Move on to the next round. Stephen, you're first.
Number three.
Three is gone, lowest is eight. Looks like a three in a mirror. Question T, Tango. Do you support the planned, brace yourself, do you support the planned 164% increase in rates over the next 10 years?
Having read the long-term plan, I'm not sure where the 164% comes from because it doesn't quite add up to what's in the books.
We had some fact checking the other night, but please continue.
Yeah. Yeah. That's correct. And I think we have to make it affordable for people. We can't just keep increasing rates at 16% each year because not only is that having an impact on inflation and the people in the city, the ratepayers, but also on anybody who rents in the city will be having a 10% rate, rent rise every year. So we have to be careful what we do and make it affordable for people. It's not a race to get this vision done. We may have to stretch it out a bit more and make it work.
Thank you. Murray. Your choice.
Next, lowest.
Roger.
Why not?
Box nine. Question H, Hotel. Do you wish to promote or delay public transportation measures for Tauroanga?
I really believe we've got some serious gaps in the existing service. So I would certainly promote it, but not promote it in a manner which suddenly you're going to be able to hop on a bus and get a free lunch or a free breakfast along with free wifi. For the life of me, I don't understand why we haven't got a park and ride down there at the lakes or at the crossing, I think they call it. I don't understand why there isn't a park and ride at Bay Park. 5,000 car parks, access to the highway. I understand they're going to put it next to Bay Fair just to totally stuff up the congestion around it. So I would certainly promote public transport. I enjoy using it when I go away, those of us that have travelled, be it to Wellington or Christchurch. It's great. Hop on a, hop on a train in Papakura, go into the CBD in Auckland. But that's not going to happen here. We're a different geog, you know, the geography of our city is difficult, I understand that. But until such time as we put in park and rides, just a simple park and ride, that new service which Larry referred to.
Thank you very much. Martin.
22, please.
Thank you, Martin. Also, microphone a little closer for you, I think. Cheers. AA, Alpha Alpha. What will you do to help homeless youth in our community?
Very challenging question and it's not one that's entirely the responsibility of council. This is a central government and all its agencies, health, housing. Homelessness is not a one, one fixed solution. It depends on why the person is homeless, many different issues at play here. Pulling out of society, drug, alcohol abuse issues, it's lots of different things why people become homeless. And it's engaging with them. It's engaging with each, each person, each one has an individual case. Each person has their own uniqueness. They may have just withdrawn from society completely. They may not have a wish to re-engage with society. So just providing them with simple amenities where they can possibly get a meal, have a shower, get a little bit of dignity back in their life. back in their life. It is a slow process, it is not simple. I would support anything, any measure, any program that helps young people back to be a productive, contributing member in our society.
Good answer, good answer. All right.
Hope?
Do you need me to just talk? No, you didn't get it. And then you made it as soon as you finished. All right. Yeah. Got it all. No, if it's all gone, you're in a fabric set in two weeks.
Welcome back. And hopefully I'll be saying that for the last time tonight. All right. We're going to continue where we left off. We have two round, two more questions before going straight to our hard hitting questions.
Could we choose our questions?
Okay, so we were up to Murray.
Yes, the next longest number, buddy.
Very good, sir.
They're all good questions.
Box 10. Question F foxtrot. Yes or no? Do you support the establishment of Maori wards? Do you support the Treaty of Waitangi? Why?
Got a feeling I don't know which card to use on this one, Larry. Back in nineteen, back in 2006, I was advocating that the city council investigate the, you know, Maori wards just by the by. Didn't get the support. I did get support from one elected member, so it's, I have a real frustration. I don't have a problem per se with the Maori ward. A Maori ward is about representing a grouping. Now, for the case of here, Taoriko, for example, it's a geographical interest in common. With the Maori ward, it's, it's obviously a Maori interest. So that's what wards are about. I don't particularly have a problem. Where I do have a problem with the authorities and those who have promoted and initiated the Maori ward is that there doesn't seem to be a desire to really take the community with them, to really help the community understand what are the issues? What are the options? Now, we're told that Maori wards are to sort of just to create that input, to give us a better Maori view when we are making decisions for our community. So it's reasonable of me to ask then, many local authorities, and I think including Taonga City, actually oppose Maori representatives on all the various statutory committees. Will that cease? Or is it going to be in addition too? So not particularly opposed, and I'm certainly, I've got no problem with the Treaty of Waitangi, just a few issues with how it's getting interpreted from time to time.
All right. And just generating, and again, Murray.
We've got the highest number.
Next number. Look, I think without doubt a focus for me and for the rest of the community really is about the infrastructure, the critical infrastructure versus the nice to haves. But as far as decelerating council spending on unwanted grand projects, it's my understanding that the community really hasn't had a meaningful opportunity to understand what projects firstly are underway, to what extent they are underway, and they don't really understand the full ramifications and outcomes from those particular projects. So that's going to be part of that pause for that grouping of elected members. We haven't had elected members now for a few years. So it's going to be quite enlightening, isn't it? That first three months when we get to sit down around the council chambers and the CEO is going to be presenting, and of course senior managers, presenting to the elected members, listen guys, this is where we're at. And for many people and for many elected members, they might be saying, hey, we need to go back out to the community on this and just make sure that they're on.
We have a button, Larry.
Thank you. Yeah, the question about this unwanted grand projects, I'm sure is a bit misleading. I don't know of any grand projects that haven't got support in the community. When we say infrastructure, we need to understand that infrastructure is not just pipes and roads, but it is social infrastructure. I grew up in the city. I swam in the memorial park pool when I was a little boy, and it's still there the same. I'm, I'm so thrilled that the commissioners have approved the development of Memorial Park with more aquatic facilities, which our city desperately needs on this side of the harbour. And there's many other things that are, they're not nice to haves. They're essential for a growing city like ours with young people wanting things to do, with families wanting to go places. And we've been only focusing on the pipes and the roads. And this, this city has done a pretty good job on that. Our water supply, our wastewater treatment plants, all of that is in fairly good shape. It just keeps needing lots more money to keep going to cope with the growth. But we have been terrible. And councillors are at the table and talking about some of these infrastructure projects that are very, very important to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. All right. Are we going to end the? Let's keep going. Let's keep going. All right. Larry.
Is eighteen there?
I believe so. Very good. Here we are. Question B for Bravo or brilliance. Your question. Aotearoa, New Zealand has a population represented by over 1,500 ethnicities, cultures and social identities. Studies have shown that diverse and inclusive societies both increase well being and economic growth. How would you actively improve Taoranga Moana's sense and celebration of its diverse society?
Pretty tough question. Council does a lot in the area of arts and culture and so on, and in supporting the multicultural society. Other ways in which we try and help people who move into the city to settle here and become familiar with what's going on. But by and large, it requires the participation too of all those diverse communities to have their voice heard at the council table. And of course, it, it begins with voting. And we can help them with understanding how voting occurs. I have Filipinos living in my neighbourhood and they all have, as soon as they got here and got their residency, they went and enrolled to vote and they've been voting in the last couple of elections. That's, that's an important part because they'll never get representation if they don't participate in our democracy. I'm not quite sure how much more the Taonga City Council could do to help improve this. It's a vital thing. Everyone should feel welcome. Everybody should feel this is their new home. And the diversity of our communities is part of life. And people have very different ideas. We need to have harmony and all of that. But I'm not sure that there's a specific.
Thank you. Stephen.
Thirteen?
Lucky number thirteen.
November. What are the three top issues you believe constituents in Taoriko face? Specifically about the ward area, not CBD issues, commissioner issues, et cetera. How would you solve these issues?
The first major one for me is the transport issue, especially around Taoriko. Before the business in the, in the lakes. There's a major roading block there. And until the council, till the road comes through from state highway down the back, I think the issue will continue. I don't know what we can do in the short term. Until that road is put through, then we will see a change in the way traffic is actually progressed. I don't think in Taoriko we have too many major issues. That's what the problem is. That's why nobody turns up to these meetings. We, we have in Taoriko have a targeted rate. So everything we have done, we're a newer suburb. That is an issue to a lot of people because we see council trucks around every day, or city care trucks, as I should say. And every bit of grass is mowed about five times. So that is probably the only issue we have. We are very fortunate that we are blessed with.
Sounds like you guys are looking to represent a very good ward.
Well, it's very diverse.
Hmm, that's right. It's not just the lakes.
Martin.
Number seventeen, please.
Seventeen. D for Delta, your question. Preamble first. The most vibrant and successful cities on earth have grown societally and economically in part through abandoning concepts of homogeneous societies and embracing the diversity of our populations. Aotearoa, New Zealand has a population represented by over 1,500 ethnicities, cultures and social identities. How would you grow Taoranga Moana through actively celebrating all people who call our city home? This question appears to be a double up. Your choice on answering.
Yeah, it's a slight variation in wording from another question. Growing Taonga is not a challenge for Taonga at the moment. It's dealing with the growth we already have. We already have a very diverse community and it's well represented. And that diversity continues to be attracted to Taonga because we are very good at accommodating a very diverse community. Taonga's biggest issue is providing spaces and places for all these different community groups to show, show off their value to our community. That's the council's, one of the council's issues is giving all these different diverse communities a place in which they can show the rest of us the value that they've added to us just by them being in Taonga. And I value this very diverse community and the various communities around Taonga because they've added so much to our community.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if anyone here knew. I read an article in The Post recently which cited the percentages of, you know, how much cities have grown from last census. Does anyone know how much Taonga was?
I think it was ten plus. I think it's the fastest, it was the fastest growing in the last census period.
Yep.
We're now not. Hamilton is growing faster than us, but in between census periods we were. And I think it was ten, ten point something.
That is impressive.
Hmm, no, I am. That's over three years.
Because this is what's adding to all our housing issues. You grow and we haven't got the houses to provide for people.
Yep. All right. We are going to move on to hard hitting questions. All right. We're back for hard hitting questions. First hard hitting question. Do you support the Taonga City Council's long term plan 24 to 34? And this time, Stephen.
It's essential that we have a long term plan for the city. How it's made up is going to be, as a councillor, once you get in, you're going to have to spend a lot of time going through each of the years to see how it is made up. We have to support it because that's the way we're going to grow. We need to have a plan ahead. We need to have a vision for the future. So therefore, I believe we must continue in this vein and just make sure that we are totally aware of what is in each year. At the moment, we're in the dark about a lot of things. We need to make sure that we can get inside with the staff and the CEO and go forward.
Thank you. Martin.
Yeah, in its current format, I'm not entirely agreed with the 10 year plan. I believe a lot of the council staff, their briefing around the 10 year plan and what to put in the 10 year plan was flawed. The current commissioners were well aware that if, if elected, the National Act, New Zealand First Coalition would change Three Waters and return it to the councils. And yet they pushed ahead with a plan that did not allow for that. Spoken to a couple of MPs, were approached to lobby Simion Brown to postpone the signing of the 10 year plan until after the new council was elected. That was rejected. So in reality. in reality, you could say it was semi-rushed as other councils around the country had the opportunity to delay slightly to reintegrate the water infrastructure spending into their plan. Um, the major loss in our ten-year plan as a result of this is, is to actual roading infrastructure. None of the CBD developments lost any funding in our ten-year plan and I was disappointed with that.
Larry?
Yeah, ten-year plan is essential and I think I would fully support the current one we have. But we need to understand that it isn't actually a, a full ten-year plan because you, you review it every three years. You have a new ten-year plan. Getting anything done in the city is, it's first of all, begins with getting it into the ten-year plan. And then each time, even annually, you can revise and do changes. But, but every three years, you have to do a new ten-year plan. So it's more like a three-year plan with other things out there to the ten years. And you, and you do have to have it because you've got to keep planning towards those things. Otherwise, you'll never get there on time. Nothing happens fast in central government or in local government. And I think with the, with regard to the Three Waters and so on, I think our city has had very good planning for that because we know we're a fast-growing city. The debacle over the Three Waters, and I'm not sure either if the old option or the new option is going to be the right one. Uh, we have to keep going with providing clean water, safe water and so on for our community and funding that as best we can until alternatives come forward.
Time will tell sometimes.
Time will tell.
All right, Murray?
Of course we need a ten-year plan. It would be irresponsible not to have some idea of where you're heading. I also share the, the frustration or the disappointment that perhaps the commissioners didn't choose to allow the incoming governance, the democratically-elected governance, to carry out that period of consultation and communication with the community and to sort of just better tease out and understand the ten-year plan. But that aside, it is there. And as has been mentioned, it can be revisited at any time. And a city is no different to our tourism business when we're on a journey. We know we, or we think we want to go somewhere, but let's just keep an open mind. Let's keep communicating with our passengers. And it may be from time to time, a voice from the back says, can we stop? I would like to go here or I would like to go there. And I think as a good councillor, democracy would say, we listen, we're flexible and we need to adapt with the tide.
Very good. Oh, I cannot budge in on hard hitting questions. All right, um, we're now going to go to our second hard hitting question. Do you support removing the racecourse for building more housing or a new hospital? And first up, Martin?
Basically, I'm a no. Um, large and growing cities need large open green spaces. I admit this one's full of a golf course and a racecourse, but the racecourse is multi-use. It is regularly used for markets, for other equestrian events, for other community-based events. Use the racecourse and its facility. And it gives other groups an opportunity to use a large green space to do whatever function they choose to do. Um, I'm definitely opposed to any sort of a new hospital there. We already have one that we, that the government cannot fully staff anyway. If we do look at a hospital situation, it needs to be further out to meet the growing needs of where the city's going to grow to, not where we are now. It needs to be prepared or placed so it meets growth in the future. But no, I'm fully supportive of the racecourse, the current green space, and it can stay exactly where it is.
Thank you. Stephen?
I too, uh, believe we need to keep that green space. It may change in the future. It may no longer be a racecourse in the long term, but we need to keep it because the young people want to see the green spaces in our city. As for the hospital, I believe the reason the hospital was put there because it's central to the city and it's central to everybody getting access to the hospital in a timely manner. The hospital actually has plenty of room out the back, low, a lot of low buildings everywhere on site. And there's plenty of room still to develop the hospital, plus the land below the car, the car park below is still available to develop. But that is a government decision when they will fund it. The hospital should stay where it is because it's not earthquake risk. It's actually in a good condition. Let's be smart about what money is spent on. But the green space must stay.
Thank you. All right, Murray?
Look, uh, totally opposed. In fact, I was blown away when it even came up as an issue for the Taoranga community. Just couldn't believe it. I don't go to the races. I don't play golf. And my only frustration with the racecourse is I wish to heck they'd take that hedge down so that I could have a greater overview of the green space and the golf course. It just beggars belief. Now, directly adjacent to the golf course, which they were talking about putting houses on, we have Gretton South. Now, much of Gretton South, the course was built in the fifties and in the sixties. It's getting near its use-by date. And much of it has been intensified, but only with two or three properties on a site. So there's clear opportunities within the existing as-built areas to intensify. But for the local authority to actually suggest putting houses on that critical green space, um, yeah, for me, just beggars belief. As far as the hospital goes, um, I'd certainly like to see a little bit more of the satellite services done. They just opened a new facility in Gretton. It could be some other community road and elsewhere, providing health services.
Thank you, Murray. Larry?
Well, in regard to the hospital, um, it should stay where it is. If we have, if we need another hospital, which is coming very soon, it should be out in the east to service the population out there. The problem with the racecourse and housing is that everybody assumes it'll become like out of Papamoa along To'ora'oa Drive. If you, if you give it up for housing, it's going to be crammed in there. There's no need to lose valuable green space if the racecourse was relocated and still have housing provided within it. And I'll tell you another thing that's needed to be looked at is that the Gretton Village School is, is in desperate need of major upgrades. It's falling apart, that thing. And it would be better if it could be relocated in the midst of a community in the racecourse and get better facilities because schools are very, very important for us. And that land which the school currently sits on could be used for intensification and apartment living around the, the Gretton, um, retail area. So we should keep looking at it. We should keep investigating it. Racecourses could be between here and right over there and they can alter the purpose of both locations.
Thank you very much. All right. Hard hitting question number three. How will you restore confidence with the ratepayers in this city? And randomized list, Stephen?
It's not going to be easy because the ratepayers don't have any confidence in our last lot of councillors. So we need to show that we can stand up, we can work together, we can trust the process going forward and that we do have a clear vision. It's not about, and it's not about us as individuals, it's about what you, the ratepayer wants. So therefore, we have to show that we can stand up and do the right thing. I, I guess it's going to take time. It's not going to happen overnight. So as a, as a councillor, as if you're elected, you'll have to prove because each session is videoed. So therefore, you will have to show that you can abide by your word and listen to what people are saying and then make decisions.
Thank you, Stephen. Martin?
Yeah, well, this speaks to Taoriko. You're, we are asking you to elect us to the council and as such, we will represent you at the council table. It is up to us to listen to you and carry out your instructions and build a Taoranga that you want, that you want to live in, that you want your family to be part of. A recent example of why this isn't working was Plan Change Thirty-three with the change in building heights. The people of the Mount did not want multi-story buildings. An independent commission said no or suggested that wasn't the right way to go. And the commissioners went ahead and signed off on large story buildings. I'm not for or against multi-story buildings. It's that the community made it quite clear they didn't want them. A commission, an independent review panel said that was probably not the best way to go. And yet, the Mount's got multi-story buildings. That is what costs trust in councils. If you don't do what the community wants, the community is not going to support you. And then we have an issue when the next major issue comes around, we have trouble engaging with the community because they think we don't listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Very close there. Nicely done. All right, Murray?
It's probably the most, for me personally, it's the most significant and critical issue that I would face as a city councillor. If you've got the trust and respect of those whom you are leading or taking with you, then the chances are your journey is going to be that much easier. If your passengers, I'm hopping back to the buses, but if your passengers are feeling at ease, if they don't really feel that you know what you are doing or you don't give a damn, then the journey isn't going to be good for any party. So I think part of the pause on being elected is going to be addressing that very issue, the most critical issue. And it goes way beyond the former. The makeup of the last council, two nineteen, I didn't see it myself as being particularly different to any other makeup that I've observed for the most part. The, you know, there was a critical difference in terms of how the, the merrility was handled, but that's a personal issue. That's the biggest issue. Get them to trust you. Pause. Take time.
Thank you, Murray. Larry?
If I'm elected to represent Taorika Ward, I will do my best to restore that confidence by working hard, by making decisions all the time for the best interests of the city. I do not believe that as many people in the city have lost confidence as what we sometimes say. The commissioners are appreciated by a majority of people in the city for the things they've accomplished. I think there were some councillors in the last council, when all of their emails and texts were revealed, people were very shocked at the things that they were doing and the behaviour they had. That has to be gone. And we have to have a new team of councillors elected who have the integrity and the commitment to a team working together and a new mayor whereby we can restore that confidence. It will take a little time for some people, but I believe it's achievable and I want to be part of.
Thank you very much. Now, it is time for our closing statements. Let's roll the dice again. All right. Yes, um, backward. There we go. All right. All right. Now that that is settled, Stephen, closing statement. Two minutes.
Okay, right. Yeah, I, I'm asking the people of Taorika to vote for me because I believe I have the financial background to understand what is happening in council, to take my experience and help set the rates properly, not to, to make them affordable so that we're not overextending our ratepayers. We're not causing those that rent in the city to have massive rate increases every year. But to make sure that I work for you, I'm prepared to listen to you, I'm prepared to work with you. I believe that it's not about me, it's about what you want. I believe that we have to keep having regular meetings in the term those four years so that we communicate constantly with you and then we work together going forward. So vote Wheeler next to this election.
Thank you, Stephen. Murray?
Hi.
Murray? You're up.
I'll get up and think about this one, but I'm really hoping that you do vote for me, Taorika, in the, um, in the election. I've got an absolute passion for the community. I've lived here for the most, you know, the bulk of my life, a couple of, a couple of years in Brisbane, but I'm totally passionate. But equally passionate about our city, I'm passionate about the integrity of our democracy. It could be just so much better. As far as the growth of our city goes, it's always grown here. We hear the stories about the exponential growth, you know, as if we're jacking the beanstalk. Well, in the last thirty years since I've been investing and living in Taoranga, the growth has been between one and two percent. You know, so it's not dissimilar to your grandchildren and your children. You just plan as you go. It is really not that hard. I'm looking forward to being part of a collective of elected members that will spend time building trust. Because I'm sorry, but I do disagree, you know, with the speaker. The community doesn't trust politicians. Read any Reader's Digest poll, the last Circa poll that I read. Taoranga City Council was at the very bottom of the list of a poll undertaken over eighteen months. It may or may not be particularly accurate, I don't know. But I think you're in La La Land if you believe the majority of communities, you know, the majority of our residents and ratepayers respect and trust politicians and councils. So for whatever reason, good or bad, we really need to work hard at that. So I look forward to the opportunity on being elected, of pushing the pause button and looking at ways in which we can, with a real passion, with real integrity, how can we apply meaningful, inclusive democracy to our city? Vote Murray Guy, number one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Murray.
What are you chuckling for?
All right, Martin, you're up.
Yes, Taorika, I'm asking you to vote Martin Roseman, vote one for me at this upcoming election. This next election has a few firsts about it. The Taorika and Taoranga as a whole return to democracy. The term is a little over four years, so we get to trial something for the first time. There's a lot that this city is capable of. And through my time and life in Taoranga, we have never really achieved our full potential. We play host to the largest input-export import in this country. And it, we live off that. Our industry grows off it. The recent growth in the Taorika Business District is as example of the growth potential that this city has. But in order for us to grow, we need to develop a group of society and a community in which businesses want to come here, businesses flourish here. And those businesses are going to need highly skilled workers to work in those. So we need a community that works together collectively to grow this beautiful city that we live in. So Taorika, please take the time, investigate all the candidates on show here, get to know us a little better, make an informed decision and get as many of your friends, families and colleagues in the Taorika Ward to vote. I'm, I'm asking you to vote for me. I'd love to be on council and represent you, but above all else, please vote in this upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry?
Yes, very much become informed as you vote. That is the essential to getting better results. And I would urge you when I deliver this to your letterbox that you will take the time to read it before you choose between the four of us. I believe my experience will be valuable in the next council. I have seen councils change many times over the past twenty years. And new councillors have an enormous task to get their heads around running a city of $400 million budget and meeting all of the needs that we have. So please, if we have a whole new council with no knowledge of the past, no knowledge of the good things and the, and the mistakes, I think it'll be less effective than it could be. I am ready to go again. I ask you to give me your number one. I ask you to read this. On the back is all of the things that I honestly can put my hand to, I've achieved while I've been serving you in this city. And they are worth noting because there's more to be done. We have to keep moving forward. There are things in the Taorika Ward that definitely need attention. And I will be working hard for you to get those things addressed and solved. Thank you. Please be a considered, intelligent voter. Give number one to Larry Borlock.
Thank you, Larry. Now, before I hand over to Sam, I would just like everyone to thank our candidates, our audience and our crew for coming out tonight and making the effort to be part of, uh, the democratic, uh, process. Um, so if everyone could put their hands together, please. You may have noticed from other shows, uh, if you've been following, uh, the lack of applause and that is. and that is in no way reflected in our candidates and what they have had to say. It is due to me, the hype man, I'm not being able to do my traditional role. But other than that, I think we've had a great show and I will pass you over to Sam.
Oh, you're making this very quick and, you know, you've still got the keys until it's a pop though.
I know, I know.
Might be better for me coming across this as I'm a bit more of an expert when it comes to STV than probably compared to the rest of the teams. When it does come to voting, please make sure you don't just select your first preference, but your second, your third, your fourth. You can't do a fifth here because there's only four candidates and thank you for all the candidates coming out today for a hundred percent turnout and we're off for another, fingers crossed, hundred percent turn-off for the Welcome Bay Ward. So this election is going to be decided by second and third preference votes and whoever is going to be the final councillor to represent the Taureko Ward will have to achieve on the last iteration at least fifty percent of the vote plus one. So when it comes out to voting, make sure it's that point there, you've got four brilliant candidates here, put their feet to the fire and, you know, so you can sit down there, guess what it is. And shall we just say, I'm glad I'm not voting in this board because otherwise it'll be very difficult for me to sit there and decide because I can't just sit there and put one equal down, down on there. Now, cheeky question, I'm a barista by trade. Can you please tell me what type of coffee you would purchase if you were to say your local favourite coffee retailer or you turned up to Bean Here at the Newtown Market on Saturday Market in the Rongatai electorate in Wellington, the only electorate in the country that has two airports in it? Microphones? Microphone?
This is your vote because I drink avalanche sugar-free coffees. We have boxes and boxes in our pantry, cappuccinos, caramel lattes and so on, and they really meet my taste buds and they keep me sugar-free.
I respect that decision.
When I'm at home, I am a bit partial to that too.
My coffee drink, cappuccino with cinnamon is my preferred and quite large at that.
Oh, you'll love the Bean Here Bean Giant with a quad shot of coffee that's in a sixteen ounce cup.
Definitely a flat white, double shot please, no sugar.
I like that, traditional, keep away from the sugar.
I'll have a beer, thanks mate.
I'm sorry, I don't have a liquor licence. So yeah, I thought I'd sit there and get that, that's the personal twist on there and yeah, as you can gather, this is who's paying the bills. Yeah. And also for those who are wondering, seven PM tonight, we've got Welcome Bay Ward where I'll be in the driver's seats once Nick hands me the keys.
I may have lost them. No, no, you'll be right, you'll be right. All right.